This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, this is Harold Watson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus nineteen pandemic, we are conducting this meeting on GoToMeetings.com on Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. The time is now seven oh five P M. Quorum for this meeting is three, and I will now call the following elected members to speak up as present. Christine Kazanas, I don't have here. William Boyd.
Present.
Myself, Harold Watson. Present. Dan Sem. I don't have him here, and John Staley, I don't have him here. But we do have our alternate Debbie Lamberty. Lamberty. Yes?
Yes. Harold, Commissioner Watson, I'm sorry. Christina Kazanas and Sandra Zelik are also there.
They are, okay. Well, then, we have more than our. We have one, two, three, four, five. We have five people with our alternates present right now. So I guess we could actually start. Tonight, we don't have any guests, but we do have our Saul Ward Planner, Susmita Atala. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to remind everyone to raise their hand if they would like to be recognized by the Chair and wait to be recognized. Called on each and every time throughout the meeting, please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows us to conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. With that said, I called to order this monthly session of the Stratford Planning Commission. The first item on our agenda is. And I'm gonna have to stop here, is an explanation. Tonight, we had two different projects on our agenda, both of which requested, after the agenda was made, to be for a delay. So neither one of our of our hearings tonight, we have anybody coming in, which means that we also do not, we don't have a public segment tonight, but we also don't have discussion of those two items. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we are limited basically to one or two items on our agenda, which is why we decided to go ahead and move forward tonight. That being said, the first. Sorry, give me one moment. I need to find my current agenda. Give me a moment.
It's approval of minutes.
Okay. So is, well, the first is approval of minutes.
From July twenty-one meeting.
Do I hear anybody with a motion on July twenty-one meetings? Christina says she offers a acceptance, correct? Anybody second?
Wasn't there.
Sandra wasn't there. William, you were here.
You know, excuse me.
Yes?
Aileen Marsh, Secretary. Just so all of you are aware, Margot, who researched Robert's Rules of Order, actually, when you vote on minutes, when you make a motion, you don't necessarily have to have been at the meeting, and by making that motion or voting on it, you are not saying that you are at the meeting, you are just affirming that you have confidence that the minutes are accurate. That's all. Just an FYI.
Oh, second.
Okay, second, all in favor? Yes?
Aye.
Anybody object? No. Minutes accepted. The next thing on our menu is our new item, correct? Smith?
Well, it's the same old item regarding Stratford Housing Partnership. We just wanted to give you an update today. So the committee, the Housing Partnership Committee has met a couple of times. And Commissioner Watson, if you want me to give an update, I can do it right now.
Yeah, I think you could do it much more with fewer words than me tonight. So yes, if you would. Let me just make a comment before we start. I think this, that this committee meeting, the committee that's meeting on Stratford Housing Partnership, is going to come back eventually to planning with a document that we're really gonna have to pay a lot of attention to. So you, everybody on planning, I hope that you'll pay as much attention. When you get sent the next report, please spend some time looking at it very carefully, because we have been putting in one and two times a week for the last, I guess, two months, it seems like. A lot of thought has gone into this. And you'll see, a lot more is going to take place, but it will have a real impact if we can get something done on Stratford. With that said. Just maybe.
Yes, so as some of you may be aware, based on who attended our previous meetings, a Housing Partnership Committee was formed per the Mayor's Directive and in accordance with state statute, which includes the Mayor, myself, from the staff, Mary Dean, and Jay Hibansky also attend these meetings. And then we have committee members ranging from various sections of the town with various backgrounds. Our Planning Commission Chair, Harold Watson, is one of the members, and then we also have a Zoning Commission Chair, Chris Levy, on this committee. And then we have a person with a real estate background, Desmond Nuzzi, and Bette DePonte, who is from Social Services background. And then we have Chris Blake from Inland Redlands Commission. And we have Jennifer Sheldon, who is currently on the Economic Development Commission. She's also part of our Complete Streets Committee. And we have Elizabeth Sulek from Housing Authority, who is also in this, and correct me if I'm wrong, did I forget anybody, Mr. Watson?
I, probably, but it sounds pretty complete.
I think it is pretty complete. I'm just looking at my list here, yes. So we have been meeting since June ending, I think. Initially, we met once a month, but we felt like we have not been moving at a pace that we should be moving for this project that is preparing a housing plan for the town. So from last two weeks onwards, we've been meeting weekly during lunchtime on Thursdays. It's open to the public to listen in if you would like to. And very soon, we will be coming up with a public engagement strategy that will involve the broader public participation. And during this COVID times, we have to figure out ways to engage people. So the consultant who was hired for this project is Glenn Chalder with Planning Metrics. He has extensive experience. He's my peer in the planning profession. I've known him for quite some time. He's worked in nearly eighty municipalities in Connecticut, including Fairfield's Affordable Housing Plan, which has been successfully adopted and is being implemented right now. He also worked with communities like Darien and Narwhal and Greenwich that are all closer to Stratford. So he, we had a data collection piece in the beginning, and I shared the results of the data that was presented at one of her meetings, at one of the Planning Commission meetings earlier. Right now, he developed a booklet on housing strategies. All of these materials are online on the Planning and Zoning webpage under Town of Stratford Planning Department, under Housing Partnership link. Even the links to our videos are posted on there to watch the meetings and to know, you know, know how the discussion transpired. So based on the strategies that were presented, we, there was a lot of back and forth. Yeah, and we couldn't even get through half of that booklet in the last two meetings, because we have a pretty diverse group. Some people want accessory dwelling units, some people do not want it. Some people support, you know, a range of options like more density, and some people want less density. So we are kind of figuring out what the group is, as a, you know, as a whole, leading towards to, so that, you know, the consultant can get a sense of a direction on, you know, what Stratford actually would like to envision. Having said that, this is only, you know, the committee getting familiar with the strategies, and there will be a bigger public engagement piece where this will be presented to the public as well to know their input on these really strategies that have been presented.
Can I manner up one second and just add something, Susmita?
Yes.
The one thing I must say about Glenn, who's our, who is the consultant, he has been incredibly good at listening to everything that we say, at confirming what we've said, and also at incorporating it into the next meeting, the next meeting's document, so that he's, he's not just giving us a prescribed text of what's been done for the other eighty communities. He really is putting us through a process of discussing even our conflicts, discussing our conflicts, because currently, those are going into the document as part of this whole document, so that what he believes firmly, and I agree with him absolutely, is that what we need to come out of this whole process is a clear picture of where we're doing things right, of where we can make immediate improvements, and of where we can also look towards the future to making even better improvements in our new P O C D, which will come in in two years. So whatever we do is not gonna change the world overnight, but we're looking for something that will give demonstrable results sooner than later. That, that was it. Susmita?
Yes, if anybody has any questions, I will answer them right now, yes. Commissioner Watson, I think Commissioner Staley has a question.
Yes, yes, John, go ahead. Your mic is off. John, you're, you're on mute. Still. Okay?
Yep.
I just wanna be recognized as present. Thank you. Yes, William?
Yes. So based on this Stratford Housing Partnership, I read through all the bullet pointed different things. I made some notes. So are these the questions I'm allowed to ask you now, Susmita? Or comments or?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I'm William Boyd from District Two. And just gonna breeze through something. I just highlighted a couple of things, you know, the consideration of things. And obviously, from all of these different bullet points, you can see, there's no Swiss Army knife that's gonna handle this entire situation or issue. The number one thing seems that seniors cannot leave their homes and go to another facility or residence in town. That's number one. Two, they're listing low income as low income housing or moderate income housing. It's just housing. People who make a decent sum of money, the housing here is still expensive, not even only for low income housing. I saw some of the variances they were thinking about in terms of zoning, meaning putting granny pods and subdividing and adding to homes. It seems like they're looking across a wide swath of things. The one thing I would add, given some of the things that I've seen on here, developing existing two-family homes, maybe Stratford buying some of the two-family homes and redeveloping them. I don't really see that happening because they're all, they're all bought. I mean, people own them all, and if the, if one comes available, it gets snapped up pretty quickly, so I'm not seeing that strategy. So my real question is, is in these meetings, is there a plan to look at the different potential sites in Stratford? And, and based on the sites, try to do maximize each area for a particular situation? So for instance, Lordship Boulevard, I go over all the time. On the left, there is all these wide swaths of land that there's nothing there. And I know there's an owner because there's advertised that it's for sale. But something like that is a perfect situation where you can do some more dense or housing with some sort of density. You don't have to worry about traffic flows as much because it's a major thoroughfare. And senior housing could be there. It could be mixed use because they're saying they don't want seniors isolated. It could be sort of a small community in that area if it's planned correctly. So is that some of the things that they are talking about in these meetings?
I can answer if you want. Yes, William, I, we've gone around a lot of those. Remember, we are still limited. Either we're gonna pony up Stratford the money or find a grant to do it, but we're still limited by what the commercial world is doing. So, you know, we could say we want this, but it's a developer who has the money, who's gonna spend the money to do it. Some of that property also would have to be rezoned, and that's part of what we're looking at. I do know that early on, we, we tasked Susmita with coming up with where are current buildable lots in Stratford that could have multi-housing units on it, on them? Not necessarily Section Eight, definitely not just Section Eight, but housing where we could try, try some experiments with different kind of housing types. So that is all real work that has to take place. But that is the kind of work that, if we don't list it as being a requirement for this, this project, it won't ever happen. I know, having worked on planning, we've worked on exactly that, trying to get that together and never to any real, we never managed to accomplish it. So hopefully, putting it as one of the key points in a document like this.
So with that said, isn't there state funding, whether or not we can grant land as owners of Stratford, or Stratford could have monies to buy land, but isn't there state monies that can help develop? We don't have to use a commercial developer. I mean, we do, but aren't there state monies that would lend, have monies for projects like this to help with this issue? It seems like they would.
Yes.
If I can answer, Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Can I answer?
Sure.
So regarding Commissioner Boyd's question on housing sites, first of all, based on the data findings, we found that there is a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing in Stratford compared to nearby municipalities. And by naturally occurring, it means that a sales price of a home of two fifty K can be found in Stratford, whereas you cannot find that type of home somewhere in Fairfield or in other communities that are closer to the train station and, you know, as you get closer to New York. Having said that, the incomes of people are much lower than what they can afford, and that's why the crisis is the way it is in terms of not being able to afford homes. So right now, when we are looking at affordable housing, we're looking for both workforce housing, which is like sixty to eighty percent AMI, and about like eighty to one twenty, I would say, most of AMI, meaning area median income. So eighty to one twenty percent of area median income could be considered a good range for middle-class, working-class families. So those kind of, you know, housing normally do not get any funding assistance. The funding assistance that you normally get is for low and very low-income households from Housing and Urban Development, for acquisition, construction, demolition, all kinds of support you have through community development block grant programs. So, but what we are looking at is a different, you know, we're definitely looking at the low, very low income as well. That's why Liz Sulek is on this team as a Housing Authority representative. And also, we have invited Chris Bendeky, who is our Community Development Administrator, to come and speak with us. But more so, we are also looking for options or sites for promoting middle-class workforce housing. The sites haven't been selected yet because there was no direction right now from the committee to the consultant on what the committee would like to see. Would they like to see more multifamily? Would they like to see more accessory dwelling units? Where seniors can age in place on their same lot? Would they like to see a combination? Or would they like to see two-family homes being purchased and redeveloped, like one of the members suggested? So once the committee comes to a decision on the range of options, then the sites are easier to select. We did talk about the Allegra, the Bullywood site, and there's, one of the members had a suggestion for promoting elderly housing near the Armory, you know, right near Holly Lane, that side. So we were just looking at, maybe we can, you know, look at grant opportunities like Choice Neighborhood Grant that is offered by Housing and Urban Development to see if we can redevelop that site in the context of the neighborhood and tie it into the surrounding neighborhood improvements. So, and I think one of the commission members also suggested the Knights of Columbus site in the town center across the library, and he said, maybe it's privately owned, but maybe the town can look into this site and see if that could be a good option for elderly housing. Center School was, also came up for discussion again on, you know, what being one of the potential sites. So there were some suggestions from the committee on the sites as well.
Knights of Columbus, where, where is that?
It's across the library, Stratford Library.
I thought Knights of Columbus was near. Oh, okay, across from the library, okay.
Yes, Deborah, you had a question? Your mic is off.
All right. There was a Knights of Columbus on Main Street as well.
I think that's what she's talking about.
Oh, okay. But I don't, I didn't see a library near there, so that's why I, you know. Sorry.
Yes, John? Thank you for recognizing me. I was just curious, what, we looked at multi, multi-site development where things were integrated. Now, we're talking about many issues, as Mr. Boyd had said, and we're looking at a lot of different areas. We're asking, we're being asked for an opinion, and we don't have enough information to make that opinion, in my belief, for me. Thank you.
If I may respond to that, Commissioner Watson?
Sure.
So this is just an informational update on what the Housing Partnership is doing and what discussions are, you know, coming up. There is no opinion or vote or motion for this right now. It's just very, very, you know, in the beginning stages, and I wanted to keep the Planning Commission abreast with, you know, planning-related topics in the town. While the consultant was, the commissions requested a joint meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissioner Watson has been advocating for it, so that the consultant can come and present to the commission members on the findings and know what the opinions are. And at some point, the consultant would seek your input, reach out and give you more information before you can offer an opinion.
And let me just add to what Smith was saying. Everything that he's presenting to us, what he's gone through is, he's pulled out existing, what all the existing statutes and zoning and everything else says Stratford is doing. And he's given that to us as this is the base of where we are right now. And this is where we could change. These are suggestions of what you would think. And then here are the long-term examples of where we really could change big. And in both of those instances, giving, our discussions have been around, do we, do we like this idea? Do we have other ideas that we want to have added in? Is this something that we can afford to do? What is the avenues of making it affordable? And is, is this something that there's the will in this town to support? Because that is really what all of this comes down to, but all of this pulls out of Social Services, Planning, Zoning, Town Council. Everybody's gonna have to have a say in this. Essentially, there, every, every part of our government's gonna have to vote on this if we really do want to make a change in the way we're handling it right now. Yes, Christina? Your mic is off. Stop. Your mic is off, Christina. We can't hear you.
I think your mic is on, but your volume is low on your computer.
Could you have your computer turned down, the volume on your laptop itself? You have it all the way up. Not hearing a word.
Christina, when you did your settings, did you say that you wanted a voice over internet? Oh, that's my only thought, sorry. You can also call in on your phone, too.
She's gonna re-log in, probably. Well, while she's coming back, I just have one other quick question. Susmita and Harold, Chairman Harold. Considering we're the Planning Commission, they're gonna meet with us. Will we, you know, I just heard something on radio about Fairfield, and they always say planning, zoning, planning, zoning. Again, remind me, we're one of the only areas or towns that were actually separated? So they say planning and zoning, we're actually two different factions? So we're not really, we're almost like an afterthought, not really the thought in real time? And, and I'm wondering if it's that a situation you feel too, Harold or Susmita?
Oh, go ahead, Susmita.
Sorry, Commissioner Watson. I, I just don't know. This is the first time I'm, you know, I've, I've worked in New Haven where it's combined Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is separate, but there are some, you know, benefits to having a separate, independent Planning Commission, too, because I've noticed that when it is a combined commission, sometimes planning takes the backseat because the development applications take a long time to review, and there is not enough time for the commission to actually sometimes, you know, discuss planning-related matters. And even if they're being discussed, there's not, you know, not at a steady pace. But on the flip side, when Planning Commission renders a decision and it goes to Zoning Commission, sometimes Planning Commission feels a loss of control, because these are two separate commissions right now.
William, if I could just add that there is, one of the last discussions we have in our list of of points to cover is exactly that. Is this something that Stratford would consider combining the two? I, I'll tell you honestly, I think it's a bad idea, because planning's primary responsibility is the P O C D. So we are actually responsible to making sure that this is rewritten, re-implemented over ten years, and then so that we're putting together information as we grow over those ten years. That's a very different task than zoning. Zoning is act, is reacting to what is on the books right now. Whereas, our responsibility is always to think about where are we moving forward? So there, there is a, two very different responsibilities. But that will be brought up within the next couple of weeks as one of our discussions. None of this that we're putting together. is set in stone. It all still has to be sent to every different area for their responsibility in terms of what inputs they have to make. Specifically, there are about six or eight zoning regulations that both zoning and planning and Town Council would have to weigh in on, do we want to change this? You know, currently, you can't necessarily, it's not easy to take a house and divide it into two senior dwellings. Do we want to make that easier for it to take place in this town? Yes, John?
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
I feel this is inappropriate for you to be giving opinions about too many things that have not been discussed. So I would just like that to be record. Thank you.
Okay. I can only add that I too am a member of this committee. So I'm giving my opinion. I'm not giving the commission's opinion. But I'm also trying to relay to you what's being discussed.
I think you were directing the conversation. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Christina, are you?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. We can.
Okay, great. Sorry for the technical difficulties earlier. It seems like in the brief time that I was away, we seem to maybe moved on to another topic. So I don't know if my comments are still relevant to what we're talking about. But I just wanted to say that just in looking at and reviewing the booklet, I was particularly interested in the recommendations around creating a housing trust. And I'm actually wondering if or when discussion around that in the partnership has occurred or when it will occur to discuss that option a little more fully because I'd be interested in hearing what that discussion is like. I know that housing trusts have been done successfully in other cities like Burlington, Vermont. And they are, I think that they are particularly valuable in encouraging homeownership among modest-income families and people. And which I think is going to be incredibly important moving forward if this economic recession, mini-recession that we find ourselves whirling towards continues and gets worse.
Christina, I can only tell you that that has been discussed in many different ways. We are looking into, Trumbull has a way of keeping hold of some of their mortgages, the lower-income mortgages that we, Stratford does not get involved with them at all. So we have three to 500 units that we could actually, if we could, if we could put some kind of a hold on them in any kind of way, those could go into our count of affordable housing long-term. So that's the only way that I see that we're going to quickly be able to move many units if we can't build massive housing.
Can I also ask, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner, I mean Chairman. What, when, Susmita had mentioned that the lunchtime Thursday talk, we were able to listen. Is that information on the P and Z website or how do we call in?
All of our, all of our meetings have been recorded so far and they're all up there. If you go to Planning, you can find those Stratford Partnership there, all of our meetings.
I meant, I meant, can we listen live or do we have to listen to them recorded?
You can listen live. You can listen live.
Yes, there is. Commissioner Watson, if I may respond to that. All the agendas are posted on the Stratford Housing Partnership sub-link on the Planning and Zoning webpage. And that has the call-in information to listen. And, but you may not be able to speak, but you can listen to the conversations. The other thing regarding the housing trust that you mentioned earlier, I think it is in one of the strategies in the booklet three, but we haven't yet come that far in the discussions. And I know Fairfield has their own Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And they do charge their developments on additional fee in lieu. I don't know what it is. I'm eager to know how to monitor and implement it, but yes, it is going to be discussed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else? Williams?
Yes, William Boyd, District Two. I forgot. I spoke with New Neighborhood Houses in Stanford. My mom lives in a housing trust in Stanford. And they have about four different projects where you go in, you're allowed to buy a home, a condo, for a certain amount of houses, the price is stabilized. The town goes on the title as well as your own title. And the house price is determined based on the median income from that particular town. She's been living in that home and it's allowed her to stay in Stanford for over 30 years. So they are very successful at it. And I was just talking with a gentleman the other day, Leo, from New Neighborhood Housing. And I was talking to him that I was on the Planning Commission. And he would like to, they would like to do a presentation because they're in two different municipalities in the state. They would like to do a presentation to show how it is, what they do and how it works. It's been wildly successful. It's kept teachers in town, police, fire, seniors, workers. It's kept plenty of people in town that would have otherwise been priced out. And they've done it very well. So I wanted to put in there that when he does have a proposal, I wanted to go through you and Susmita and see how we should have him present to show that this is maybe another cog in this whole wheel, maybe.
Listen, I think we're always looking for information. I'll leave it up to Susmita, but I, it would seem to me that we could fit that into the current agenda as part of our information gathering.
I agree with you, Chairman.
So will you get the information? That's Susmita.
Oh, yes, I will get the information and make sure I submit it through you to Chairman as well as Susmita. And show its viability and have them present, show what it is they do. They are actually looking for other places, towns to develop in. So might be a good marriage.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one last thing to mention to the group. It's not regarding Housing Partnership. It's regarding line use commissioners training. Because of COVID crisis, UConn staff Bruce Hyde, who used to do in-person trainings, has pre-recorded his training and now it's made available online. And I just received the link in email. I will forward to everyone. And I mentioned this to Commissioner Watson earlier today before our meeting started as well, that maybe if not next month, because next month we have two public hearing items. Maybe in November meeting, if we have a light agenda, we could play the line just training together and view it together. And if you have any questions, you may feel free to ask me at that time. And I can, or you can view it at your homes and come back to the meeting to discuss it with questions, whatever you prefer. So that, you know, everybody is brought up to speed on how planning commissions should run a meeting and take public testimony, overcome a perception of bias or not show a perception of bias, avoid conflicts of interest. Stuff like that, that would be helpful for those who joined us new, as well as, you know, refresh the memories of those who have been here for a long time.
Can everybody hear me? It's Dan Sem. Zone four.
Yes. Good evening.
Yeah, I've been having some technical difficulties too, but I just wanted to just let everybody know that I've been on the call and Susmita, I appreciate that because I think we all could use a little refresher in regards to what we do and how we go about doing it. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So if I understand right, Susmita, what you're suggesting to us is that we, that you send the link to people who could see it individually or we try to schedule it into our next meeting, assuming our agenda is not too heavy.
Well, next meeting, it may not be possible, Commissioner Watson. We have two public hearing items that have been continued.
Right.
Training itself will take a full one hour. And I don't want, you know, commissioners here to be exhausted, that they don't start paying attention. So we should pick a meeting. If we do not have public hearing items, maybe the next meeting would be a good one. Otherwise, if it gets, it keeps getting postponed even in November, then maybe we should figure out a way that everybody watches it and comes to discuss at the meeting at least.
I know this is kind of sacrilegious, but we, in my experience with planning, we've never had a December meeting. So we could make this our scheduled December meeting. Maybe not the last week of December, but sometime the beginning of December.
Alien Marsh also put together a calendar for meetings for next year. And I wanted to know if the commission would be comfortable if we moved the time to six o'clock instead of seven o'clock? Because right now we are doing all digital meetings and I don't know when the in-person meetings will start anyway. And even if they did, it would six o'clock be a convenient time for all. I still have to check with the Town Council's secretary regarding any other conflicts at that time on third Tuesday of every month. But I just wanted to seek your input on what you think about the time change from seven to 6:00 PM.
I'm fine.
Yeah, the only, the only problem with that, Susmita, is if we have hearings, then you can't really start a hearing at five.
No, I think when you, the meeting would start at six o'clock, like starting at seven. So the public hearing piece can start at six.
I would not be available at six o'clock every other Tuesday. So I don't know how the meeting could fall. This is Sandra.
It's the third Tuesday of every month. You won't be available?
I have an appointment at five in Fairfield every other Tuesday. So sometimes it will hit the meeting nights and sometimes not.
If I can send you the dates, they're all third Tuesday of every month that Alien put together. Could you let me know if that's, you know, conflicting with your other appointments?
Sure, I have the dates though. They came in an email today, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Yeah, you can email me later.
Do we need to vote on this, on this, on the schedule and the possible times? Or do we want to wait to, okay, everybody by next, by our next meeting, please have your opinions on this. And if that's the case, I do not think we have any other business tonight. Does anybody have any? That was fast. Any one second? Christina seconded. Anybody opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, my friend John.